Good evening. Welcome to the March 19, 2018 meeting of the Pacifica Planning Commission. And we'll go ahead and start with the roll call, please.
Commissioner Steggen.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Chair Niblin.
Here.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Present.
Commissioner Kraske.
Here.
Great. We'll go ahead then and start with a salute to the flag, and I'll ask Commissioner Steggen to lead us in the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Steggen. We'll move into administrative business. The first order of administrative business is the approval of the Order of Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the Order of Agenda? Commissioner Clifford.
I move to approve the Order of Agenda.
Second. Commissioner Gordon.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, unanimous approval of the Order of Agenda. Thank you. Then we'll move to approval of minutes. We've got the minutes from our meeting of March 5, 2018, for approval. And Commissioner Clifford, I see your light on there.
Yes. I move to approve the minutes of March 5.
Okay, got a motion. Is there a second to approve the minutes? Commissioner Gordon.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Looks like we've got four votes in favor. Commissioner Campbell, it looks like you might be abstaining.
I believe I pressed yes on there.
Okay, well, that was intended as a yes vote.
That is correct.
So I've got five votes in favor. Commissioner Campbell, are you abstaining from this?
I forget if I, I don't have the record of that meeting in front of me, so I know I missed one recently.
Yes, you were absent from the March 15.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
So then we'll go ahead and have the vote show that we had five votes in favor of approval of the minutes with Commissioner Campbell abstaining from that vote. So approved. Designation of liaison to City Council meeting. I myself been designated for the April 9 meeting of the City Council regarding 674 Corona. I don't think we need any other designees at this point. So that takes us then to oral communication.
Yikes.
Which is the portion of the agenda available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. I've got a card from Mr. Makele, Ron Makele. Please go ahead and proceed.
Yeah, Ron Makele. Good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, I just want to speak a little bit about development, a completed development on Fassler. Okay, so those townhouses that are, you know, in the eastern portion of Fassler up there, they're white. But in 1982, I live in Rockaway down below there, moved into our house in 1981, but in 1982, that project came about and I filed an appeal against it. And I really didn't file an appeal against the project. I was too late for that. But what happened is a bunch of trailers are going to be placed on that property to house out-of-state workers, non-union out-of-state workers, to build that project. I just wanted to point that out. Unfortunately, my appeal was denied. Back then, there was no fee for an appeal, so that was a positive thing. But anyway, I just want to point out, those projects are kind of white, off-white, very, very glaring. You go up on Cattle Hill or even down in Rockaway, which would be the north side, some of the higher elevations, you can see those buildings. They're very discordant. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And also, when they put drainage in, the drainage that drains off all the parking area and the driveways and off the rooftops and all, a lot of that is a big, huge, like a 30-inch pipe that goes down from that project all the way down and empties into Rockaway Creek. You know, when the first rains come, you've got all kinds of automobile byproducts off the driveway, and then all that stuff goes into the creek. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. All of our creeks, we have six creeks in Pacifica, they've all been pretty much compromised, some of them real seriously because of development and not paying attention to where all this runoff is going. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Makele. It looks like we have another person who'd like to address this in public comment. You just state your name for the record. That'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bridget Duffy. Sorry, I'm a little out of breath. I'm here because I wanted to ask the Planning Committee to ask the staff to set aside a time where the people of Pacifica could bring an idea, better formulated than it is today, because today it's just an idea that I'm bringing you, to bring some rectitude to our housing crisis by allowing some small homes, tiny homes, to be built on greenbelt land. Pacifica would get whatever their fee is for, you know, hopefully a reasonable lease, that it would be a permanent lease as long as the person wanted to be there. It would only go up for the maintenance of the property if and when it happened, and the individual would be making the personal investment in building the building. So it's kind of a hybrid solution to a big problem that we're having in San Mateo County and San Francisco. And I would really like to explore it. I know that there are architects among us and builders among us that know about these things, and I'd like to bring them to you and sort of present something to you, if you wouldn't mind, and that's why I'm here. And I think the reason why we need to do that is because solutions are very desperately needed. We're not really going in the right direction right now. I don't know about Pacifica, I don't think we spend a lot on the homeless, but I know in San Francisco, they spend about $320 million on the homeless. And most of it is rousting them and trying to help them from all the symptoms they're having from being homeless, which is kind of bizarre, because if we put $300 million into small homes on greenbelt land, they wouldn't be homeless, and they wouldn't be sick, and they wouldn't be mental, and yada, yada, yada. Like, in other words, let's go right to the problem. The problem is people can't afford to live here. But people can't really leave here either. People like myself and my family that have been here for decades are climatized to the climate, so like a Native American. You're telling me, because we cannot get any regulation upon the real estate industry, that my mother, who is 91, literally has to be put upon the trail of tears. She will not live in Sacramento, period. She has been here for four decades. What are we doing, you know, for this? And I think this is, could be a real, you know, hybrid left-right solution, so I would like you guys to think about it. And I'm applying for the Planning Committee, but I want to assure you, I do speak the male language, so.
Thank you.
I have a question for the speaker.
I'm fluent.
Could you please define "greenbelt" for me?
I'm glad you asked. I actually put a sketch together. It's not a very good sketch. Oh, jeez. I do have a sketch, but I'll give you a, for instance. You know Eureka Square up here? Is everybody familiar? You know that big, long road slash parking along the fence, far left side of the property? Well, there's a greenbelt strip right behind houses that also have yards. So these houses in a row have yards that they don't use because it's not very, nobody, I looked at it, nobody's using their yards. Then there's a greenbelt piece of slanted land, and then that whole row of parking really is virtually unused most of the time. And I don't see why, with a little bit of talking and a little bit of whatever we need to do, we couldn't get a nice swath of that land. I think you could put about 10 small houses on it, tiny homes, you know, we're talking about really small living, closer to the land, yada, yada, yada.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted your definition of a greenbelt. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about open spaces. Absolutely not. Just urbanized areas that have greenbelt land.
Thanks, Ms. Duffy. And I know the matter's not agenda, so we can't discuss it on length, but I would state that perhaps staff could take a look at maybe bringing us something on tiny homes generally at some point in the future. It seems like definitely a matter that would be interesting, and it's certainly timely, given the issues around housing that we're all dealing with. Thank you. I don't see anybody else who has any comments under oral communications, so I'll go ahead then and move to the consent items, of which we have none. So that'll take us then to continued public hearings. And the item that we have this evening for continued public hearings is Development Plan DP 7514, rezoning RZ 19214, specific plan SP 14914, transfer of development rights, TDR 0314, subdivision SUB 22414, and removal of heritage tree for construction of a 24-unit residential condominium project on a 53,627 square foot, approximately 1.23 acre portion of an 11.2 acre site at 801 Fassler Avenue, various accessory parcel numbers there. The recommended sequoia action is a supplement to an environmental impact report, including adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, findings of fact and a statement overriding considerations. And staff's recommended action is to approve the project as conditioned. We'll go ahead then and take a staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. I'm Senior Planner Christian Murdock. The item before you is a continued public hearing from the Planning Commission meeting of February 5, 2018. To recap, the proposed project is located on an 11.2 acre property at 801 Fassler Avenue, which is located approximately one half-mile east of Highway 1, west of Seacrest Condominiums, and north of Fassler Avenue and the Harmony and One Development. The property spans two land use designations in the city's general plan land use element. The eastern portion of the property is located in an area designated as low-density residential. A larger western portion of the property is located in an area designated as open-space residential. The low-density residential designation provides for residential development from three to nine units per acre. The open-space residential designation provides for residential development of one unit per more than five acres. The entire property is zoned planned development, or PD, with a hillside preservation district, or HPD overlay. The project is seeking a transfer of development rights, or TDR, which would allow development of the open-space residential portion of the site at densities consistent with the low-density residential designation. In return, the applicant would deed-restrict all future residential development potential of the low-density residential area, so it could never develop in the future. In total, the applicant would transfer 32 units of development potential and combine it with one unit of development potential for the open-space residential portion of the property, giving the area a maximum residential development potential of 33 dwelling units. The resulting development, as proposed, would include 24 condominium units in 12 duplexes at a density of 2.1 units per acre. Since the Planning Commission hearing of February 5, the applicant and staff have each been working to address questions posed by the Planning Commission. These include the following topic areas, which are described in greater detail in the staff report, and our Fassler Avenue restriping plan, building height alternatives, assessing visual impacts of Building B, installation of story poles prior to project approval, and the potential for future street development across the project site. In sum, the applicant has proposed a revised striping plan, has presented building height alternatives, which would either eliminate the angled roof features or reduce ceiling heights within the dwelling units, and has not provided specific visual impact analysis of Building B. Staff has recommended against story pole installation and believes sufficient protections from future street development would be in place if the project is approved. Lastly, to confirm, the project remains as proposed and described in the November 6, 2017 staff report with the following exceptions. The applicant has volunteered to deed-restrict the balance of the site outside of the transfer of development rights, or TDR, deed-restricted area. The applicant has volunteered and expanded, or rather, the applicant has volunteered to expand onsite trail network and grant access to the trails to residents of the Seacrest Condominiums. The applicant has withdrawn its request for payment of a fee in lieu of onsite construction of below-market-rate housing units, and instead will construct the four units onsite, and has revised the Fassler Avenue restriping plan in response to commission comments on February 5. Staff recommends adopting the attached resolution, which includes certifying the California Environmental Quality Act document, which is a supplement to an environmental impact report, and adopting the associated findings and mitigation measures, including the statement of overriding considerations, approving the specific plan subdivision, and transfer of development rights entitlements as conditioned, and recommending City Council adoption of an ordinance rezoning the property with a development plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Do we have any questions at this point for Mr. Murdock? Looks like Commissioner Clifford, do you?
Yeah, here I go again. We've seen three striping plans. Are they all in front of us now, or is only the most recent one in front of us?
I think it's our opinion that the commission will be able to go with any of the three that have been presented in the record. We are here tonight with the city's consultant and the applicant's consultant to discuss the most recent one in greatest detail, but I believe, in my opinion, any of them are available for the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions at this point? Okay, well, I guess then we'll offer the applicant the opportunity then to speak with respect to the matters that the planning staff has shared with us this evening, the revisions to the project, et cetera, if there's a desire to do that. So this would be the time for the applicant to do so if they wanted to. And it's certainly not required if you don't, if you think that it speaks for itself, or if staff has adequately covered the things you want covered.
Good evening. Jeff Potts, SDG Architects. I think that staff has adequately covered the alternatives that we presented. We did want to, however, just state for the record that either of the previous height version of the project or the reduced height version would be amenable to the applicant.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That'll take us then to the public comments that we have on this matter. And I actually have one speaker card from Mr. Ron Makele. If there's anybody else who wants to speak to the matter, please go ahead and present a card. But at this point, I'll ask Mr. Makele to come, come on up.
Yeah, Ron Makele. Once again, this project, I wish I'd gotten a little, got to jump on a little earlier on, but I'm concerned about, you know, the color, as I pointed, I think at the last time I appeared at this meeting, and as I pointed out earlier, the Seacrest units up east of there are really glaring and not at all, you know, they're very discordant, visually discordant with the environment there. So I hope that we can, these buildings do not end up looking like that. The other thing, too, I'm concerned with the drainage, make sure that there's no off-site drainage going into the creek, Rock Creek. And also, I have a curiosity about the fact that, you know, the Harmony One project across the street, they have two retention basins, they're big ponds that collect water off the site, then they have these raised outlet pipes, so that it kind of mitigates the stormwater system from getting overloaded, and it also helps to reduce pollution, off-road vehicle pollution, vehicle off-road, or, you know, pollutants off the roads into the, into the environment by, you know, a lot of times the water sinks down, and then the pollutants get digested by the stuff, by the soil. So I'm just curious why they have two of these retention basins over there when it's only, I think, a 13-home, 12 or 13-home project. Here we have this 24-unit project, and I don't think I see those, if we have those retention basins on this site, on this project. So just a curiosity on that. The last thing I want to mention is, the people are really going to be affected the most by this project from a view corridor standpoint. It's on Rockaway, there's a street called Bayview. Some of you may be familiar with it, but it's a steep street that goes up, very steep, and it's got about eight houses on the right, nine or 11 houses on the left. And they all have decks at the backyards, and the predominant view from these decks is right at that, right where this development's going to be, you know. So, you know, right now you have that nice, you know, sinuous undulating ridge line there, natural, and you have Montero Mountain in the background, but that's going to be affected, their views are going to be affected a lot, more than anybody else. I know you've had people up here speaking about view corridors, but in my view, because I live in Rockaway, I know, and I know some of the people up there, but they're going to be affected quite a bit when that project gets built. So once again, I just want to point out, any ways we can mitigate it through color and whatnot, I'd appreciate it, and that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Makele. I don't have any other speaker cards for this matter, so absent that, what I'm going to do is, again, afford the applicant the opportunity to address the comment that was just made, if the applicant chooses to. Again, not required if there's no desire to, but it looks like we will get a comment.
I just wanted to make sure to point out that the runoff situation and the cleaning of the water and all that is handled through the standard C3 measures that are required now by the state, far different from the old project that was discussed with the drainage pipe and equal to what they're doing across the street.
Thank you.
And I guess we would be, you know, amenable if it came to the commission's choice to tweak the colors of the project a little bit.
Thank you. Okay, well, we'll go ahead then and close the public hearing portion of the, of the matter and bring the matter back to the commission. Go ahead and see if my colleagues have any comments or questions at this point or views to express. Go ahead then and start with Commissioner Clifford. I think you had your light on first.
I did it again. Okay, I'm going to start off.
Can I just, I'm sorry. I think we want to just disclose that we had some communications with applicant, some of us did, so before we start the substantive deliberations.
Surely, if anybody wants to go ahead and, Commissioner Gordon, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. I was contacted by the applicant by email, and it was a non-substantive communication, pretty much one way, and that's about it.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody else has anything to disclose along those lines. I myself don't, but, okay, excellent.
I did get the email, but I didn't respond directly. Well, I guess I told him that I wouldn't respond. So I'm going to go back to where I was at. I actually had on my list of three things to ask questions about was the colors of the buildings, because the renditions show a large bit of white and then some colors on them. And I would really like to have a condition put on that the buildings all be muted earth, of muted earth tones for the palette, and that it also be, that palette be used on into the future, so that once somebody else buys it, they can't just come in and change the colors to stark white. Okay? And then I really am going to want to drill down on these, the three different striping plans and see which one actually works out the best. And at this point in time, I'm in favor of both the flat roof and the eight-foot-high ceilings, and that is primarily because I want to keep the heights down as much as I have three reasons for that. One is that our usual height is 35, that's our maximum. It's in an HPD, which we're supposed to be very careful with, and it's also a view corridor. So with those three considerations, I am very concerned about not maxing out the height or going above the height limit.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, my remarks are similar to Clifford's, Commissioner Clifford's with regard to the height. That was a big consideration back when we, or I was on the commission when we approved this project the first time in 2007, and we had a 35-foot height restriction, and there was a lot of blood on the floor on that approval, and that was one of the concessions. And I'm just, I guess I still don't see a reason to allow buildings above the 35-foot, especially in this kind of sensitive area. I think over the years, we've certainly insisted on 35 feet on a lot of different projects, a lot of single home projects. I think a lot of those applicants would have loved to have just been given a waiver on that, and we haven't, and I don't see why we would do that here, especially when we have a precedent here in 2007 of a 35-foot. I had a quick question for staff. When we approve the variance for the height restriction, is it, what's the potential for them to go up to? Is it 40? I saw a table, not a table, but a reference in November 6. It's like they, I'm just wondering how much they could go up to past the 35 feet. I know they've limited it down to like 41 feet in some instances. I'm just wondering what we're.
Be able to check the zoning if you, give me just a moment.
No, sorry, I didn't, you know, just lost it, but I'll come back to it. I don't want to waste people's time. I'll, I'll come back to it in a second. Anyways, that's my, that's my primary, one of my primary considerations for the moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Steggen.
Thanks. I hit my button, too. I was contacted twice by this developer and replied that I don't respond to ex parte, I don't have ex parte communications with developers after the item is gone in front of the council. I have a problem with the height. I'd like to see if we could cap it at 35-foot. The recommended maximum for the hillside preservation district, again, I'm okay with the location, I'm okay with the transfer of rights. I'd like the, if possible, like the creators of the two extra documents that were handed to us, walk us through them, and in honor of Ex-Commissioner Cooper's suggestion, maybe see how this traffic plan kind of coordinates with his suggestion there, or the most recent one.
Okay, well, I think then with the indulgence of the rest of the commission, that maybe this is a good time to maybe ask for maybe a little deeper dive into this, into the document we have up here. This is the, I guess, the most recent striping plan. Is there, I think you made reference to our traffic engineers being here, who might be able to talk us through it.
That's correct. So the attachment presented to the commission, there are copies in the rear of the chamber for the public. Essentially, it was just an explanatory document. There was some question at the last hearing about prominent ridge lines, and so this is a map of the general plan land use designations within the neighborhood, which includes the project site at the southern boundary of this neighborhood. And so you can see along the sort of left-center, the designation, the symbology given to prominent ridge lines. It's that semicircle, you know, repetitive sort of symbology. There are blue arrows to two examples of that north of the project site. So you can see there are prominent ridge lines designated north and east of the project area, which is bounded in red in this exhibit. However, there are no prominent ridge lines on or in the immediate vicinity of the project site.
Perfect. Thank you. So I see that. And then with respect to the other document that I have here, it looks like the, it's a, the concept plan for the restriping?
That's correct. And so we have the city's traffic consultant, Bob Grandy, here. The applicant's consultant, who prepared this, is also here, and maybe the best individual to question about its content.
Okay, and my guess is that most people probably have this sophistication, at least sitting up here, to sort of go through this bit by bit, but maybe I'd ask just for a real kind of naive walkthrough of what we're looking at here.
Good evening. My name's Gary Black with Hexagon Transportation Consultants, and we prepared the concept plan that I think you're looking at.
Yes.
So the street is 48 feet wide, curb-to-curb. So our plan has two 12-foot lanes, one in each direction, a 12-foot median turn lane that leaves 12 feet left. So we propose to divide that into two six-foot shoulders, striped shoulders, which could serve various functions. If at some time in the future this were carried down the hill, that could accommodate bikes. It can accommodate turning vehicles that want to slow down and turn into the driveway going in either direction. So that's the concept in a nutshell, kind of moves the two-lane section farther down the hill, I mean, the one lane in each direction section farther down the hill to accommodate the shoulder. So that's it in a nutshell. If you have detailed questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And again, just to be like super clear from where I'm sitting, basically, for some portion of time prior to the, some portion of distance prior to the proposed project entry, and then for some distance, I thought I read maybe it was about 500 feet after the, well, maybe it was the project entrance, or maybe at some other point, basically you're down to one lane, and then it returns to two lanes thereafter.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, any further questions for?
Yes.
Okay, I see your light there. Commissioner Clifford, go ahead.
Can you tell me how this compares with the first plan that we saw in terms of the striping?
It's really, it's pretty much the same except for the shoulder stripes. This one has shoulder stripes, the original one didn't. And this also carries the transition from two lanes in each direction to one lane farther down the hill.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stejic.
I'm curious what the distance is between Roberts Road and the exit of this APN that's planned, and Roberts Road and the transition to the one lane north of the project.
The question is, how far is that distance?
That's correct.
Oh, I didn't bring that measurement with me. Let me estimate it here. It looks like it's about, I'll say, 1,200 feet or so. Maybe 1,000.
Commissioner Stejic, did you have a follow-up at this point?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to figure out with Google Earth what the distance on there is, and I'll have another comment later. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you. Hi there. So I'm just trying to break this down and drill basics. So we've got three plans that have been before us. Now, I think we're trying to figure out the difference between them and the pros and the cons especially. And so you said that the difference between the current plan, let's call that Plan Three, and the very, very first plan, Plan One, is Plan Three has striping on the shoulder?
Mm-hmm.
That's the basic difference?
Yeah.
And it goes down to one lane further down.
And it goes down to one lane further west?
Correct.
Okay. And so in terms of the advantage and disadvantage of that plan versus Plan One, I, go, what do you say?
We think that there's kind of a, having the two-lane to one-lane transition happening right about at the driveway does create a bit of a more, potentially confusing, slightly more confusing situation for drivers. When we looked at the volumes, we saw that there was no need to have four lanes on Fassler in this section. That would function fine with just one lane in each direction. That provides us room for a shoulder, which we think offers a lot of advantages for, again, bikes as a long-term plan, and also a way for cars to kind of move over when they're making a right turn, to kind of get out of the way, and they don't block the other traffic. But we didn't see, the other, one of the plans, maybe Plan Number Two, I think, had a right, separate right turn lane. We don't see that that is necessary, and also that does create a bit more of a conflict, in my opinion, between the different movements that are possible.
So Plan Two introduced the concept of a separate right turn lane going into the, this project?
Yes.
So going westbound?
Yes.
And your, and your thinking is that it's not really necessary, because most of the traffic that would be turning into the project wouldn't be westbound, it would be eastbound?
Yes, and we'd prefer to use that space for something else rather than a right turn lane.
That makes sense. And so, and another factor, I assume, between making it, taking one of the lanes out at the project site, so I'm talking about Plan Three, would be that, generally speaking, the speed is slower going?
Well, the, generally, the speed's gonna be slower when you have one lane versus two. So there's already a transition to go from one lane in each direction to two lanes in each direction. And so there is a transition now. We're proposing to move that transition away from the driveway.
Right.
And yes, if you have only one lane, the traffic would tend to go slower than if you have two lanes. With two lanes, you can have, you know, kind of cars passing each other and stuff.
Right. And so the drawback, and boy, I really don't know the facts here, but in terms of the backup in the mornings during the commute hours, how far up does that backup go? Does it actually reach the project site or not?
Well, the report that I read says, no, it does not reach the project site. It basically reaches to Roberts. And so as long as you have the four-lane section down at Roberts, then you can contain the backup, and it wouldn't get any longer by moving this transition.
Right. And so I guess that my question then is, so the significant disadvantage of Plan Three is if we, if there was a need for, if it was a high-volume, high-congestion area, then by constricting the potential lanes, then you're making the project problem worse. But you're saying that since that isn't the case this high, off of Highway One, that that's not quite the problem?
It's not the problem today, to my knowledge.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Gordon. Commissioner Clifford?
Well, I want to say that I am still disappointed that the day that that particular traffic study was taken was during, between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And I know, I drive that road every day, and I have seen traffic backed all the way up to Cressby. So it, it happens, and it happens fairly frequently. So I am concerned about taking away the second lane as much as you're proposing to take away. I have a quick question for staff. I asked about whether or not there had been any pedestrian or bicycle accidents, and you were gonna check with the police department. What was the result of that?
Correct. The police department indicated that for the last 10 years that they searched, there were no reported vehicle and pedestrian or vehicle and bicycle collisions along the Fassler Avenue segment in question.
Okay, so it's possible that we don't actually need the shoulders. Thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. Actually, Commissioner Stejic, did you have anything further?
Yeah, I did. I agree with Commissioner Clifford. I've seen traffic backed up to the project site many times. Since last meeting, I drove that route 10 times at a rate of speed that would be right around the maximum that you would probably be allowed by law on there. There's a lot of people passing me. People chain in that left lane, they then stack up, turning left into Roberts sometime. And I'm worried that we're channeling the entire funnel of what's realistically 60 mile-per-hour traffic into the left lane, only to have them slightly, you know, stack up behind Roberts and have to veer into the right lane immediately there. You know, if we go 1,000 feet at, 1,000 feet at, you know, 88 feet per second, which is like 60 miles an hour, I don't know what that is, 10 seconds, whatever. It was my experience, that was significantly less time than 10 seconds. I'm curious whether there's any, you know, gravity never rests, and the cars going downhill are definitely traveling faster anecdotally, and the cars traveling uphill. I'm curious if there's any flexibility to extend that, that shoulder on the downhill side farther and reduce that shoulder on the uphill side.
You mean as a way to have like a three-lane section with two lanes in one direction and one in the other?
Let's say eight foot on the downhill side and four foot on the uphill side. The shoulder.
Just a wider shoulder, not an extra lane.
Okay. Well, you have 12 feet to work with, and we just split it evenly, six and six. Again, our concept was maybe someday you put a bike lane on the road. You wouldn't want to have a bike lane that's only four feet wide, so that's why I went six and six. But if you don't envision that you would ever want to do that, you could certainly have an eight-foot and a four-foot shoulder.
My question is for staff. Is our bike lane codified at six foot?
We have Senior Engineer Ray D'Inghias from the Public Works Department who may be able to speak to that.
Good evening, Commissioners. We follow the Caltrans standards. So a route, a bike lane is four foot, bike lane, and then if you want a bike path, that's up to eight feet. So if it's a bike lane on the road, we follow the Caltrans standard of four feet.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you. Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you, Chair. This is one of those challenging conversations, because I think something that we're all, a key fact is a little bit murky for us, and I think for me, a key factor is the backup in the mornings, how high, how far up does it go? And Commissioner Clifford says he does it every day, and he sees the backup up to Cressby. But we have the studies saying, the study that was taken between Thanksgiving, right after Thanksgiving, the week after Thanksgiving, saying that it went up to Roberts, and that's a big gap, a big difference. And it's just very challenging trying to make a decision where the, a key fact is, for example, if it's really, if the backup goes up to, up to Cressby, boy, I would not want to be, can you imagine being one of the driver, a driver has to deal with that backup, finding out that, oh, the planning commission just constricted the flow even further to accommodate this by choosing Plan Number Three. So I would be very, 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 very cautious going with that plan, Plan Number Three, and in constricting the traffic flows westbound down that hill for that, for that reason.
Thank you. Commissioner Stejic?
Just to be crystal clear, this 11-by-14 that's new tonight, labeled drawing one, what plan is that?
That's number three. This is, this is the current proposed striping plan.
Yes, this is option number three, if you will.
Great, thank you.
It's labeled as drawing number one on the plan sheet only.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question for myself. I wanted to make sure I was clear on what we were, you know, sort of talking about with respect to the building heights in particular. That was, you know, putting aside from it the striping plan, the other thing that we've gotten some significant concerns expressed around. And looking at the, I'm looking at the chart, in particular, the table, Table Three on packet page 18. I'm making sure I'm reading this correctly. If we were to implement the staff's recommendation to go with the flat roof alternative with eight-foot interior ceilings, the one building that, well, there'd be two buildings essentially that would exceed 35 feet, Building B by about four inches, and Building A by about two feet and one inch. Is that, is that right?
That's correct.
And is there any feasible way, frankly, to, Building A in particular, I'm looking at, I saw here that the average interior ceiling height for residential structures is eight feet, which is essentially what staff is talking about seeing implemented here, at least that's the recommendation. And eight feet is kind of standard for someone like myself losing a house built in 1940 or 50, that would be kind of the height I have in my house. Is that roughly what we're talking about?
Correct.
But the state-of-the-art is shifting more toward something greater than eight feet? Was that the?
That's right. Higher ceiling heights, more spacious, that sort of dynamic. Just to clarify, staff's recommendation was not to combine the flat roof and the eight-foot ceiling heights.
It was to go with just the eight feet?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
If I could respond just briefly to Commissioner Campbell's prior question about the degree of deviation from the 35 feet that the commission could grant, there is no limitation in Section 9-4.2211. In the PD District, the planning commission, if it makes certain findings, can dispense with any maximum building height, as long as those findings are made.
But I'll see the phone in a second. I just want to make sure then, implementing staff's recommendation, then we'd be looking at the first column under Table Three, which would have two buildings, three buildings actually, exceeding 35 feet, Building A, the Building A alternative, I guess. And could you refresh my recollection as to Building A alternative? What was, what was that?
That was the flipped floor plan, if you will, where there was some question previously if it was a reduced height alternative. The applicant explained that it, in fact, was not due to different grades on either side. Building A alternative was simply a different finished grade for the entry to the garage, and therefore it was not an interchangeable floor plan.
Got it. So it would be, in any event, implementing staff's recommendation, you have two different buildings, Building A and B that would exceed 35 feet to some, to some extent or another?
That's correct. Staff was trying to balance the commission's concerns about height with the flexibility in this zoning district, as well as trying to achieve what staff thought was the most interesting overall architectural design, which included the angled roofs. Staff's opinion was that the elimination of those angled roofs would be too boxy and be uninteresting
Yeah.
as a design, but the alternatives are there for the commission to consider.
Got it. And Commissioner Campbell?
Oh yeah, just, I'm just trying to get clear on the, what specific findings were made on this. So in the November 6th, 2017 meeting, we were talking about specific findings that we were gonna make, that we're going to change the height maximum from 35 feet to 44 feet and five inches. And so, but tonight, what would be the, is there a range like that that we're approving? Or are these the heights of the buildings, and they can't go beyond that?
If I understand the question correctly, those ranges would depend on the alternative selected by the planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
And so that range, I believe, was stated to account for the varying building heights from the various building types, Building A, Building A alternative, all the way through Building E. And so it was not meant to, in that case, to provide a range of heights the commission could select from, if that's the question. It was meant to say that building heights would range from as low as the one figure to as high as the other figure.
And if I could add to that, it also means that Building C, for example, would be the height that it says. It's not gonna range up to...
It can't go up to...
You know, when we get a building permit, it can't go beyond up to 44, whatever it is.
That's...
So it's specific for each building, depending on the choice that the planning commission makes.
Thank you. That was exactly what I was trying to understand. Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you, Chair. Just to follow up on Chair Nebelin's line of conversation, discussion about, I know some of the commissioners have expressed a view that, let's just cap the height at 35 feet. And I remember the option of, staff's recommendation is to be a little more flexible in order to allow for more creative design. Is that right? And then, which was the point that you guys were talking about just then, but then I just wanted to follow up one more point. My recollection from maybe last meeting, the meeting before, you were also saying that the height differential going beyond the 35 feet would have, was, would have a minimal impact on the view corridor. Is that right?
Nearly correct. So what I was stating last time is that the change in height from whatever was proposed in excess of 35 feet, limiting the buildings to 35 feet, would not have any effect on the significant visual impacts in the environmental analysis. So those significant and unavoidable impacts to the scenic corridor and the scenic highway would remain. And so if the concern was to mitigate environmental impacts, that change to 35-foot maximum would not achieve those, the elimination of those impacts. There may be other reasons to lower the height as close to or at 35 feet. However, the applicant, you know, has previously expressed some serious concern about its ability to achieve the 35-foot height limit and, you know, maintain and produce a viable product. And so it may be worth, you know, some, some discussion with the applicant to that point.
And just to sort of summarize, what you're saying is that by capping it at 35 feet, you're, you're giving up some aesthetic benefit, but you're not necessarily getting a benefit in terms of protecting the view shot.
That's correct.
And so the advantage of capping it at 35 feet is more in terms of our own consistency in approach with other, you know, with prior and, with prior applications and future applications. It's more along those lines, I imagine. I guess I'm half talking to Commissioner Campbell and Clifford, who are espousing that. Have you been listening?
I think you got it. Yeah.
I'm sure.
I was hanging on everywhere.
Just like my daughter with the phone.
I think that's consistent.
What's that?
I think that's consistent with my concern, especially, I know, I know we've granted variances, height variances in other decision makings, but here with this one, I'm a bit, just, I feel constrained to some extent, because in 2007, we really went to the mat on this one. And I don't feel like I'm gonna, I still don't see a reason to move off it. I know it's coming down to... I know it's coming down to one building, but that's just where I'm at.
But, but so, if I may, through the chair, I'm, so the, the point that, that the Associate Director was saying is that by capping it at 35 feet, you're actually not having, making a substantial, you're not making much of an impact on the view shed per se, on the visual impacts, but you are constraining what in his view is a, a better design. I'm just playing, I'm playing devil's advocate, that's all.
Oh, I know.
I'm just putting it down, I'm putting it out on the table here.
And not with your allowance chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't want to get too free form here. But yeah, I, I see that point, but I often see that, I see that type of argument as kind of an artificial constraint, that I, I don't accept the premise of the argument, that someone brings something to the commission and says, here's the design, it's above the height limitations, it's a great design, and if you don't let me design it this way, I'm going to design it some inferior way because you're not letting me go above the height limits. And I think, well, you know, no. We can do that with good reason, but here where you have, where you're coming in with a 2007 approval, basically, where this has been hashed out and you've already, we already hashed out a 35-foot height limit in a very sensitive HPD area, I don't know why I would go back and revisit that, because that was a known quantity coming into this application process.
Well, so.
From my perspective. Well, so the, so the applicant has said that, you know, they're fine with the 35-foot limit, that's, they're fine with that, if that's what we choose. And so, but what, I think what Christian's saying as a neutral observer is the, the, the design with the 35-foot height limit is boxier in his view, and without that constriction, it's nicer and.
Chair, if I may interject, I did not hear the applicant say that he was accepting of a 35-foot height limit. I've heard the applicant say that either the eight-foot interior ceiling height limit or the flat roof alternative was acceptable. I'm not sure what the applicant would make of combining both of those or an overall 35-foot height limit.
I apologize, I, it sounds like I completely misspoke.
All right, well, maybe we'll just go ahead and see what Commissioner Clifford has to say at this point.
Okay. I'm going to say that I want to combine the two and I don't, I don't necessarily think that the slanted roof improves the building all that much. And I would like to combine the two. I would, I could vote for it if they're both combined and I have a condition that mutes the colors on the building so that the buildings blend into the hillside better. So I'm, that, that, that's probably the only way I will vote for it. And then I still got to hash out the striping.
Commissioner Stegen.
I would suggest that the most qualified expert on what the applicant would and would not accept is actually in the room if we choose to query them. I, I have a question for staff and Prime Minister Murdoch is most familiar with this. Does restricting the height to 35 feet affect our progress towards the California Affordable Housing Plan?
Only to the extent that the applicant may choose to eliminate units or somehow otherwise redesign the project as a result of the, the height constraint.
What is the minimum size, square footage wise, of units in this city?
The single-family minimum dwelling unit size is 850 square feet. There are other sizes for different unit types, which I can pull up in just a moment.
Well, while that's happening, Commissioner Gordon.
It seemed, well, maybe before we get too far down the road with Commissioner Clifford's proposal, which I think is, it's kind of like a package deal and, and it makes sense, it's very cohesive, but I, we don't even know if the applicant would accept it, so maybe it makes sense for the applicant to.
Why don't we go ahead and see then if the applicant wants to speak to, to this? I'll go ahead and ask the applicant to address kind of the, sort of the direction things have been going up here.
Yes. Well, starting, let's, let's go back to the beginning. And, and I think you have some exhibits in front of you that are the flat roof where we went through and carried it through the whole, the whole of the project. Those are not produced with eight-foot ceilings. I'm the architect, not the applicant. I would not recommend building a house with an eight-foot ceiling, having done a house, a townhome, stacked flat, a condominium with an eight-foot ceiling in a decade. Just substandard, absolutely substandard. Usually 10-foot ceilings on a townhome condo type of project. These were nine-foot ceilings. The original design had the pitched roofs in small areas to both accentuate sort of the form and to provide some volume ceilings in master bedrooms and things like that. We're certainly happy to flatten those out and do something a little different. I don't think it drastically diminishes the aesthetic quality of the project to do so. I think eight-foot ceilings would diminish the livability of the project significantly. What I do want to point out is the buildings we're talking about are, first of all, the, the old approval. All in all, the way this project sits on the site, and we've provided two exhibits as such, sits lower in overall height than those buildings that were approved. The way that height was measured was done a little differently, as well as the buildings sat higher up on the hill. So they produced a higher form. Some of the buildings were measured to the top of a podium deck that stuck out of the ground eight feet. And they were called 35 feet high, even though they're sitting on top of a podium deck that stuck out of the ground. All that being said, if I could draw your attention to A05, Building A Alternate that we submitted, what I want to explain is that regardless if we do flat and eight-foot ceilings, the, the key building that's over the height limit is in the center of the site and it will still be over the height limit. And that's based on the way it's measured. If you look at that building on the high side where you would see it from the street, it's below 35 feet. If you look at that building on the low side from the back, it's below 35 feet. But the site slopes down, so we're measuring from the lowest of the low side to the highest of the high side. And the only way to really reduce that building below 40 feet is to take a, a floor off of it. And so you'd end up with a 600 odd square foot flat in there. I mean, that would be the only way to get that particular building, which is sort of the crux of the whole height issue. The rest of them are within a couple of inches or a foot or two, and again, those are the ones, so that's Building A. The other one that's, that's sort of at issue still with the layout that we have is Building B. And if you look at that sheet, again, on the low side, we've got a two-story element that is probably 22 feet tall. And on the high side, we've got a two-story element. But if you measure from the lowest to the highest, you again then are, you know, exceeding that height limit. Dropping down to the eight-foot ceilings and the flat would, would probably not achieve 35 there. And if it did, it would be by a fraction of an inch. And again, we would be producing, you know, truly substandard units with eight-foot ceilings in the living rooms and in the master bedrooms and, and all that. So I'm not sure that we've ever really embraced the eight-foot ceiling height. I would certainly go back and, and take a look at even further other alternatives to see if there, we could cite them a little. I mean, again, this could be a matter of citing it slightly differently so that I can measure it differently, even though it looks exactly the same. So really, a lot of it's a function of, of how this stuff's measured along the site. And again, I would draw your attention back to the two exhibits that we did comparing current project height to the old approval. Not that we're comparing them anymore, but, but it has come up this evening, so I want to make, make that point clear. And then if you have any questions.
Thank you, I just, I think you've said it two or three times, just, but I want to be crystal clear, you're not viewing eight feet, notwithstanding that with staff's recommendation, eight-foot ceilings as a, as a feasible way to proceed in your view?
I, I, I mean, I personally, I mean, I would have to allow the applicant to answer that question. I, I don't view eight-foot ceilings as a viable design alternative in 2018.
How about the flat?
I think aesthetically, the flat has, you know, again, I don't think it's, it's so far off aesthetically that if I had come in with this originally, nobody would look at it and say, I think you need to design that differently with maybe some peaked roofs or something like that. So aesthetically, I don't think that this is like way off and detrimental to the visual impacts of the project.
Thank you. Looks like we've got a number of comments here. Commissioner Campbell.
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Gordon, did you have a question at this point or a comment?
I do, I do. So, so you're saying eight-foot, eight-foot ceilings cramped, substandard, nine-foot ceiling, and it's, as it's drawn, is there a sort of a, what's the, what's the standard height in your, in the, as proposed? Is it nine or 10 or?
As they're proposed, they're, they're now down at nine in general. And there's, again, where, where we still have the slight increase in height, and that was done to keep the windows that we had sort of detailed in there and drawn before they're, they're slightly higher than that. So those small areas could come down a bit and really flatten the edge a bit further, but they're generally at nine feet. Certainly there's no issue and, and we'll go back and review, I mean, anything obviously at the garage level doesn't need to be nine feet tall, but as soon as you get into those living spaces, it makes a drastic difference.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Clifford.
Well, I have a question for the applicant and then I have a question for staff. In terms of the colors, I, I think I heard you say earlier that you would, could, would look at a, a more earth Tony color palette.
Yes, absolutely. We could, I mean, I think most of the buildings fairly earth Tony, except for the white. And so we could certainly look at a couple of different alternatives for that color and work with staff on selecting something that's a little more muted, a little bit more earth tone.
Okay. And my, my question for staff is, what is the, the building code say in terms of ceiling heights? What's, what's the minimum and what's, I don't, I don't think there's a maximum, but I know there's a minimum.
We believe it's seven foot, six inches.
That's correct.
That's what I thought too, that it could average 7.6. And eight is, is fairly standard for most of the buildings in Pacifica at any rate. So, thank you.
Well, I guess I had a follow-up question on that and just sort of, again, want to be clear, what's the, sort of the average in terms of newer construction? Because again, I know there are a lot of older buildings, including one that I live in, that, where I probably have eight feet, but what's the average in terms of newer construction? If you, if you're, if you've got a sense of it?
I actually don't have a sense of it.
It's not, it's not a dimension that we typically pay a lot of attention to in the planner view.
Do you have any view on that?
Well, I can just give you just some anecdotal evidence. We did the project just across the street here and the, and the one on the other side there, and those ceilings are all nine feet or taller within there. Similar, they're, they're measured on a flat pad. If I was to measure these on a flat pad, they would be under the height limit, just as those buildings are. I mean, those are taller ceilings. I believe they're 10-foot in the middle floor there and nine-foot on the top floor.
Commissioner Campbell.
So that exhibit that you showed us, I think it was at the study session where you had, the heights were actually lower in profile in effect than what we approved in 2007. And that was based on nine-foot and possibly 10-foot ceilings at the time?
That exhibit that we showed you was based on our original architecture, which had the nine and higher where the pitched roofs were and had the pitched roofs on it. And I believe at, at your request, we went back and kind of pulled some, as much more information as we could for some datums and adjusted that to be, you know, as absolutely spot on as we could get it. But that was based on our original proposed heights, which were quite a bit higher than they are obviously now with the flat areas.
But, and if you were measuring these on a flat pad, they'd all be below 35 feet?
Certainly now, without the pitched roofs, if I was measuring them on a flat pad, they would all be below 35 feet. I would have to go back and look at the pitched ones and tell you exactly where, where that point came out to. But, but roughly in that range. I mean, if you think about nine-foot plate on every floor, you got 27 feet plus three feet of floor and ceiling spread in there, so you're at like 30. And then any, any of the pitch or parapet or anything like that would be up above that.
Right. And I am in agreement with you. I think nine feet is kind of the, the industry standard going forward. Okay, I just want to get clear on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Stegen.
You know, when I toured Versailles, they made a big deal that the height of the roofs were 35 and a half foot and the height of the ceilings were 35 and a half foot ceilings. And I'll make just a brief note that almost the entire neighborhood of Lindemar, our biggest neighborhood, is roughly eight-foot ceiling. So I don't completely buy in that an eight-foot ceiling provides a substandard life there. I'm looking through your project, is 2120 the largest square foot of any of these units?
I would have to quickly refresh my memory on that, but.
It, it seems to be, and it looks like 1253 is the smallest square footage of any of these units, is that correct?
I do have one on this first table here that says 2143 and down to, yeah, 1253.
Okay, and that would be at 1A and is that number seven or? Okay, so these are significantly above the minimum square footage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you Chair. I didn't have any more questions for the applicant, although did anybody else?
I don't see that we have any others, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and bring it on back to the commission.
I have one more question.
Sorry about that.
I'm just curious what the, and what the final analysis of public access on that was on those trails back there.
Well, the applicant indicated at the last public hearing that it was his intent to limit access to the occupants of this development if proposed and the residents of the adjacent Seacrest condominium development.
And are the adjacent Seacrest residents included because they are insured by their own condominium association? And what was the reason to include them but exclude the other public?
I'd have to direct that directly to the applicant.
Great.
Hi, good evening Commissioners, Samir Sharma. So I've been working with Patrick a little bit on the shared access for the trails. And one of the main reasons is parking. We're not looking to, both sides are private, so it's hard to manage the parking access. Also from a liability standpoint, we're a little bit concerned. And we still need to better understand how much liability each HOA would incur depending on if we open up the access for all public, public usage. I did receive an email from Patrick recently where he stated that Harmony A1 provided public access for a portion of their site, so it's possible way to, to look at that as an alternative or an option, but we don't have enough details just yet to know if that's, if that's definitive course of which we can take, so.
And at the current moment, you're asking for approval with no public access, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission then. And it looks like, again, we're sort of dealing with two, maybe three issues. It sounds like one of them, maybe we have already gotten some consensus or agreement around and that pertains to the colors for the, for the development. So that was Commissioner Clifford, it's good work in moving that along. We still have to, to figure out, you know, what we want to do with respect to the, the concept plan or the striping plan, I guess we call it. And I know we've got a few different options, including the one that was presented this evening and a couple we've looked at prior meetings. And then the heights and what we want to do there. And maybe there are other issues, but they seem to be the three that have, have come up most significantly this evening. Commissioner Clifford.
I'm going to go back to the striping at this point in time. And of the three plans we have seen, the one that I am in favor of is the second plan.
Could you refresh our recollection again? I know.
It, it had.
Maybe I'll ask, maybe I'll ask staff to remind us, it sounded like it didn't, didn't include shoulder, it didn't include.
It did not include the shoulders and it also brought the two lanes up closer to the driveway. That's, those are.
Okay, I think those are the high points.
Those are the high points. And my reasoning for, for preferring that plan is, one, I am concerned about taking away a lane as far as is being proposed. And, two, I am, based on the police report of absolutely no accidents involving either a bicycle or a pedestrian in the last 10 years, which is a decade, I'm not certain we need the, the. 10 years, which is a decade, I'm not certain that we need the shoulders.
Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you, Chair. So, I'm going to respond to Commissioner Clifford, but first, in terms of process, I like how you outlined the three issues, and maybe because we're kind of bouncing around, maybe it makes sense just to hone in one at a time on each issue. So we all speak, for example, now, since Commissioner Clifford raised it, maybe we should all just talk about the striping and traffic and see if we can come to some consensus on that, and then after that, then we move to the height limit one. That's my proposal.
That's perfectly fine. Why don't we go ahead and do that, then, if folks want to at this juncture, share kind of where they're leaning with respect to the traffic? We can go ahead and perhaps, you know, put a tack in that.
Great.
Page for Plan Two?
I don't know where the Plan Two was. I don't know that was in this material. It was certainly distributed in the 900 or so pages that went out in the matter, but do you have a page reference for it?
We did not include it in this packet, to my knowledge. I'm going to see if I may still have that in a digital format to project for the discussion.
And while we're talking about...
It looks like there may be, we may have a, perhaps somebody can bring that up to staff and show it to staff, and perhaps that would be the, that might help move the ball forward.
And it might help also to have the traffic consultant be available while we're having this discussion. I think he mentioned that Plan Two had the right-hand turn lane from the, going downhill, and it would, it seemed like that was sort of superfluous, a superfluous use of that, since most of the traffic that's going to enter in, entered the project is going to come from, come from the west, not the east.
If somebody, maybe from engineering or from the, or from the traffic consultant is still here, that would be maybe some good clarity. Again, we're talking about Alternative Two being the, sort of, the alternative that Commissioner Clifford is in support of. We certainly do want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing. Do you suppose you could come on up and, again, clarify that, make sure that we have the essential elements of it?
The Alternative Two has the, oh, there it is, has the two lanes downhill starting at the driveway.
Yep.
And has a right turn lane that goes into the driveway, and then after that right turn lane, there's a second lane that picks up at the driveway to go downhill, so.
Joints after.
Yeah. So, kind of compared to, well, Alternative Three, which we drew up, this moves the two-lane section, or two-lane downhill section, shall we say, farther away from Roberts by probably 300 feet or something.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Clifford, this remains what you're...
Yes, and one of the advantages I see to the right-hand turn is, is that if somebody is finding that they can't make the left-hand turn, they can go up, turn around, and come back down and take the right-hand turn right into the project. It gives them an alternative, especially when there's a lot of traffic, fast-moving traffic going past the project.
Thanks, Commissioner Clifford. Commissioner Gordon, did you want to?
So, and Plan Number One doesn't have that right-hand turn lane?
Correct.
Correct. And how else does it compare to Plan Two?
Plan One?
Yes.
Do you guys have a picture of Plan One?
Plan One is depicted on the bottom half of the slide, labeled "Prior Plan," and "Current Plan" is "Alternative Two" that's been discussed.
Okay.
So, Plan One is basically the same plan as Three, except it doesn't have a shoulder stripe. So it kind of, it kind of leaves the, well, that's not true. I was going to say it leaves the two-lane transition in the same place, but it doesn't. It moves it down, just like Plan Three. It's just, basically the same as Plan Three without a shoulder stripe.
Okay. So, okay, so Plan One and Plan Three both move the, move the transition farther south, which is something that I think Commissioner Clifford and I are finding objectionable. Plan Two doesn't have that issue, but in my own personal view, could good things happen if you took away that right turn lane?
If you took away the right turn lane, you could keep, that would move the two-lane, if you will, two-lane downhill even farther up the hill. That could be, instead of a right turn lane, it could be a through lane, so you get a two-through lanes.
I think I'd be, I mean, and the disadvantage of doing that?
Well, the only, I can think of a couple of things. One is, again, you know, if you ever wanted to have a shoulder area available, you can't have it with that. The other thing is that if the traffic really does back up all the way up the hill to Crespey in two lanes, and if you're trying to make a left turn into the driveway, and one lane stops for you and the other one doesn't, that creates a situation where there's zero visibility, and so that's a potential, I want to say it's, it would be rare, but it does have the potential to be, you know, an accident possibility, shall we say.
It does, but the fact is, that occurrence would be pretty rare, since the congestion that far up would be in the morning commute hours, where people are leaving, not necessarily coming back, so.
Yes, I totally agree, yeah.
Yeah. I would be in favor of Plan Two, but converting that right-hand turn lane into an actual through lane. I don't know. That's just my view, so that would be...
Can you restate that?
So, Plan Two with the right-hand turn lane shown there as a through lane instead.
And Plan Two is a top one, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right.
Commissioner Kraski, I think I'll double back, just to take care of everything on this side of me, in terms of your perspective on the traffic plans.
Yeah, we're now, I'm hesitant to reduce the shoulder from six feet to four feet, just because it has a banning traffic or bicycle pedestrian access, doesn't necessarily mean that we want to reduce that. So, I want to, I'm in favor of keeping it six feet.
So, are you in favor, then, of Alternative Three with the shoulders as shown?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else at this point?
I'm interested to hear more about that, the option of using that left-hand turn lane to as a through lane.
Okay.
So, that would be, I'm not sure that's possible, by keeping the shoulder at six feet.
Perhaps we'll circle back to that, then. Commissioner Campbell?
I think that I was okay with the design as proposed. I really, I don't, but I don't commute that. I used to commute it every day when my kid went to Oddstad, Ortega, I should say, and it was a terrible backup on Fastler, but I just can't recall how far up or down it went. I'd hate to exacerbate it for anybody. We've had traffic experts opine on this, and I'm not that, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Stejic?
I would say that I drive this route all the time on there. I'm not in favor of anything that constrains two lanes going from direction to one lane going both directions there. Does Plan Three keep two lanes in both directions? I'm asking the applicant, or, sorry, their traffic engineer.
Plan Three, well, right now, there is a transition, so that's what may be some of the confusion. There's part of the road is four lanes, part of the road is two lanes. There's a transition between the two-lane section and the four-lane section. Right now, that transition happens right about where this driveway is, and so that's the existing condition right now today. What we're suggesting with Alternative Three is to move that transition down the hill, so that shortens the four-lane section, makes it shorter. Does that answer your question?
So essentially, we lose...
You lose some stacking space.
...length of four lanes.
You lose some stacking space.
Okay, I would, in that case, I would prefer as long a four-lane section as possible, and I'm in full agreement with Commissioner Kraski's suggestion that we extend the ascending left turn lane to through lane also. Make, I'm going to point to it right here. Essentially, it's Plan Three, but with this left lane also, it's a left turn lane and a through lane right there. Not sure if that was clear, but you could turn left or go straight in the left lane ascending up the hill.
So you wouldn't, you would not have a protected left turn?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, if I, sorry, you didn't ask me, but so far, all the ones that you've talked about, I think, would be fine, but that and not having a left turn pocket, I think, would be extremely dangerous, and we would strongly recommend that you have a left turn pocket for those cars to get out of the traffic stream.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I mean, to the expert's point, and I know I'm being hyper-technical on the height, but I think it's a little bit of a difference here, is that on the traffic analysis, I mean, I'm not a traffic expert, and I'm not a safe, traffic safety expert. We have an expert that has thrown a plan out, and the city agrees with that plan, so I'm getting a little hesitant about playing, playing with and mixing and matching the plans at this point.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to get to a point where I'm not going to be able to vote.
Yeah.
Is Number Three the city-recommended plan?
I'm sorry. Is Number Three the city-recommended plan? Number Three, as I'm understanding, well, actually, I guess we should double-check with staff. Number Three is the most current proposed plan. What I thought I understood the consultants to be saying was that Plan Two would be acceptable as drawn there as well, and safe, as I'm, as I'm understanding it. Plan Three is what we came up with, and I believe the evolution of Plan Three was that we had one of our colleagues who's no longer with us who had expressed some concerns, in particular about bicycle and pedestrian safety on this stretch of road, and the idea was to create some shoulder, some shoulder buffer to provide some protection for bicyclists along that, along that stretch of road. That was the, my understanding of kind of how we got there. Maybe I'm misrecalling the specifics, but that was...
In respect to both Commissioner Niblin's statements and your original request for a nuanced conversation on safety, I will say Plan Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford?
Well, I guess I'm still with Plan Two, and I don't want to make any changes to it. I like it the way it is, and, again, it's going to be a deal killer for me. It's, I know that road, I know how, what traffic does there. It doesn't always back up to Crespey, but it does back up that hill.
Well...
And I'm, yeah, I'm just, I'm, this is a nice, safe plan. It's with the right-hand turn that gives, that slows the traffic down in front of the driveway. It doesn't get to be two lanes until after the driveway, and as I, if I remember correctly, there was going to be striping on that first, the north lane going west, keeping people from merging immediately after the driveway, so that people could turn left into that and merge the other way, and then they would wind up with two lanes, just a little bit further on than what we're seeing right there.
Well, let me state, because I haven't had a chance to state yet, that I would be in support of this, this plan that Commissioner Clifford is in support of. Frankly, I'm in support of, I'd be in support of the third option as well. I don't live in this area, and I very rarely am on this road, particularly at the times that people are talking about, so I don't have the experience that I can bring to bear on it, so I'd be willing to defer to other people who know the area better. But in the interest of moving it along, I would say that I'd be prepared to support either of the two if someone were going to make a motion along those lines. I think they both, according to our consultant, address safety concerns. I like the idea of the shoulders. That was brought up, and frankly, that's why, one of the reasons we continued the matter was to get some information along those lines. That said, I'm not wedded to it. I really would be prepared to support either one of these two things. Commissioner Gordon?
Sure. Thanks, Chair. So, in terms of what's going to exacerbate the morning backup, it's very simple. Plans One and Plans Three will exacerbate the morning backup because they make lower the point where one lane becomes two. So in terms of, in terms of reducing the stackable space, as the plant traffic consultant was talking about, the stackable space, your Plans One and Plans Three reduce that. Plan Two is the only plan that maintains it. So for that reason, I'm very much in favor of Plan Two, like, pretty much for the same reasons Commissioner Clifford just articulated. I'm very strongly against Plans One and Plans Three for that reason. I think a right-hand turn lane would be, is not necessary, but I'm not wedded to it. I feel much more strongly about not making a very, very bad situation worse for those people who are stuck in that morning commute.
Thank you. Well, I think we've had a chance to...
What's the shoulder on Plan Two? Shoulder width on Plan Two?
I don't think there's a shoulder contemplated. Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct. Plan Two does not have a shoulder. There's no shoulder there today. It's four 12-foot lanes, and this is the same. It's four 12-foot lanes. It's just how the lanes get utilized that's different. So there's no shoulder.
But as to the shoulder, if I may, we're talking about one of the steepest streets in the entire city, you guys. I mean, come on, like, are there really that, I mean, I drive that street all the time because I play tennis at Terranova. There are not many bicyclists and pedestrians on that, going up that hill or down that hill. It is the steepest, it's got to be one of the steepest inclines in the city, anyway. So, I've totally, if this was a different, if this was, I'm a bicyclist, I'm really into that, and if this was a more readily used by pedestrians and bicyclists, well, for pedestrians, there's a sidewalk, so I'm not concerned about that. But for bicyclists, if it was more readily used, I think it's a very good point. But you've got to balance the very, very few bicyclists who ever use it versus the many motorists who are stuck in the morning in there on the commute. So, anyway, you've got to do balancing.
Well, I think we've gotten a lot on the table here, and I feel like we have a good sense of where people are. I guess Commissioner Stejic, I'll, we'll take one more comment.
My question is for staff. Is there a sidewalk there?
I don't believe there is one currently. Staff had proposed, as part of the Complete Streets policy, to require a sidewalk installation.
There's a sidewalk on the south side. There's a sidewalk.
On the other side of the street?
Yes.
From the development?
Right.
Okay.
Not on the side where the project's proposed.
There currently, there currently exists a sidewalk on the south side, all the way up?
That's not my recollection. Perhaps Senior Engineer Dugidis could comment on that.
Why don't we ask Commissioner Clifford for his comment? Looks like you have another one.
Well, one, I wanted to check, you had talked about a motion. Is that something we have to do separately now?
No, I was just making clear that if that became part of a motion...
When we're ready to make the motion.
Wanted to make clear where support would lie, as to the extent it matters.
And as far as the sidewalk goes, I believe it starts at Roberts Road and then goes on up.
Thank you. So why don't we then turn to the other issue that we're trying to sort of nail down here, and that is, as it pertains to building heights. And, you know, obviously, there are a few different things that are on the table. One is kind of what the proposed height is in the project. You've got sort of the notion of a flat roof alternative, a, the notion of perhaps eight-foot ceilings, and of course, we've heard a lot of different sources of information on this at this point, or a combination of those things, or maybe things we haven't thought of, but was hoping we could maybe try to sort of get a sense of where we are collectively, or at least individually, with respect to how to move this piece forward, and maybe we'll start this end of the dais.
Great. I'll just make a, these aren't small units, 2143 square feet. These are, these are units almost the same size as homes. The developer's option really isn't reducing the number of units if we drop the height there. I think the HPD is pretty clear. I think we've had a pretty consistent, even back to 2007, consistent pattern of enforcing the 35-foot height limit, and I'd like to enforce it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell? Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I, I actually completely understand the argument that the developer's making about the heights, and the same height as what we approved back in 2007 in effect. I think that one of the reasons that the buildings were higher, or were 35 feet back in 2007, they had, I think some of them were built on a subterranean garage we had, and that was a decrease in visual impacts, and it was part of the horse trading that was going on at the time. This is, there's a lot of trade-offs. This, this one's bringing a lot of trade-offs, again.
Yes.
And, you know, I'd like to actually put out there that I'm fine with the density transfer, fine with, I appreciate the deed restrictions, I appreciate the lack of connectivity with the paper streets, I'm fine with the color, actually fine with the traffic analysis, 'cause I'm, I'm not a traffic expert. But I mean, but although I do appreciate the, kind of the common sense that Commissioner Gordon and Commissioner Clifford are bringing to this, as people who, you know, you gotta have the, the street science, too, as a component of things. It's, and, but when it comes to height, there's, there's so many trade-offs here, I just, and this was an HPD site originally, and it's, it's, it's not the type precedent that I can set, and it's just, unfortunately, going through so many of these public hearings in 2007, it's, I, I understand the importance that a lot of people bring to that notion that, you know, we really need to, to kind of hew to that ethic, that these height restrictions mean something in the, in this kind of, in this kind of development. So I hate to be slavish to, to the height restriction, and maybe there's a way to break it down, and I, and I completely get that nine feet is kind of the way you wanna go with bedrooms. I totally understand that, so I kinda want my cake and eat it, too. I'd love the developer to have nine-foot ceilings. I think it's gonna improve the marketability of the project, I think it's gonna be, look, look better. So, I don't know if I can, I, I kinda wanna hear what my other commissioners say on this one before I make a...
Okay, that's fair. Thank you for sharing your...
I'm struggling with it, tell you, Chair.
Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, Chair. Clarification from staff. So what's on the, what's on the table is, in terms of, is it possible to, all right, flat roof versus peak roof is, is one issue, and then height, ceiling height is another issue, right? Is it? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, in terms of, in, in, is it possible to stick with the nine-foot ceilings, ceiling height? So with the nine-foot ceiling height and the peak roof, then you're, you're needing, then you're in excess of the 35-foot limit, right? Or no?
Correct.
With the nine-foot ceiling height, but with the flat roof, are you in excess of the 35-foot?
In some cases.
In some cases?
That's correct. Building A, Building B, and Building C would each be over 35 feet. Building A would be 40 feet, one inch. Building B would be 37 feet, four inches, and Building C would be 35 feet, 10 inches.
So then the only way to get within the 35-foot limit is to go with the eight-foot ceiling? Or no?
And the flat roof.
And the flat roof, I'm sorry.
However, Building B and Building A would still be over 35 feet.
Okay. So basically, no matter, even if you get your eight-foot ceilings, even if you get your flat roofs, you're still over the 35-foot limit. Where I'm coming out is, I enjoy personally, I have, I have a, I enjoy feeling a little, having a little room over my head when I'm in a, in a, in a house, so I like, I like, just because eight, you know, just because a lot of homes, older homes have eight feet, that's great, but I think the, the more modern approach is to go for more spacious houses, which is better. I'd be more in favor of a nine-foot ceiling. I don't have a lot of strong feeling about whether we go with a flat roof or a peak roof, I really don't care. I heard the applicant say that he thinks aesthetically, it's, you know, he can go with a flat roof or a peak roof, so I'm fine with that also. I am concerned about being a little, to borrow Commissioner Campbell's words, and then use it against him unfairly. I'm concerned about, about being a little bit slavish to the 35-foot height limit, and by insisting on that, coming up, having a bad product, and approving a bad product, and I don't wanna do that. So I'm okay with, in some cases, going over the 35 feet where it makes aesthetic sense. So anyway, nine-foot ceiling for me, and I don't care if it's a flat or a peak roof, and I don't care if it goes over the 35 feet, in some cases.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford.
Well, I do care. Boom. And I, like I said, I would be willing to accept the flat roof alternative height with the eight-foot interior ceiling. And my reasoning there is, is one, that one, Building B would only be four inches over the 35 feet, which is insignificant. And the, the Building A would be 37 and one inch, which is two feet and one inch over, and I could live with that. But I, I, when it starts getting over 40, 40 feet, then I'm, I'm having a problem with that in terms of HPD, ViewCorridor, and there was one other I had, but, and our standard building height of 35 feet. There's, there's three strikes against it in my, my view, anything other than this flat roof alternative and the eight-foot ceilings. It's just pushing it, pushing everything. We have multiple buildings that are higher than 35 feet elsewhere, whereas here, we have one that's only four inches higher, and the, the one that's the highest is only two feet and one inch higher. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that, but I'm not comfortable with any of the other alternatives.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraski.
Yeah, I think I would agree with Commissioner Clifford. I'd like to adhere as close as possible to that 35-foot height limit. So I would be in support of the flat roof alternative height with the eight-foot interior ceilings. I'm having trouble understanding why that would create inferior product. I think these houses are gonna, are gonna sell if it's an eight-foot ceiling or a nine-foot, so I think we should adhere to that 35-foot.
Well, I, I am actually in, well, I'm sort of more in the camp of Commissioner Gordon. I, I think that really, I don't think eight foot, you know, notwithstanding my own, my own house, I don't think eight feet represents kind of the state of the art of the way that we probably ought to be trying to, to build going, going forward. It just isn't, it just doesn't seem to me to reflect, you know, good contemporary design. And I frankly am more of the view that, and maybe it's sort of a hybridized approach, I, I think the flat roof alternative is, would be satisfactory to me if a building exceeded, you know, 35 feet, that would not cause me problems, notwithstanding, I understand it would cost some of my colleagues problems. I'm wondering if there isn't some way, for example, for Building A on the flat roof alternative to be brought below, significantly below 40 feet, maybe something closer to the height of Building B, which is 37 feet, four inches, which strikes me as a less, as perhaps a less kind of problematic height, recognizing it gets us a lot closer to 35 feet, and whether my colleagues might be, you know, prepared to consider the flat roof alternative height option without requiring eight-foot interior ceilings, if we could get Building A down to something closer to Building B's height, around 37 feet, four inches. And I'm wondering if the applicant is even, you know, prepared to address whether that's even feasible.
Certainly, we can, you know, address the structural systems and things, and see if we can take a couple of inches out of the floor depth, and certainly, if it came down to, you know, something or nothing, I would say that eight-foot ceilings in a bedroom, third floor being bedrooms in these units, is much more acceptable than eight-foot ceilings in a great big, great room that's as large as, you know, this half of the room. And maybe in the spirit of that compromise, we could work in that direction.
Okay. And frankly, I don't even know what my colleagues would think of that, but anyway, it was an attempt to try to...
Question for the applicant.
Go ahead.
Could I get you to come back up, please? You intrigued me with the idea of reducing the, the floor thickness. Is it possible to reduce both the floor thickness and the ceiling, the, the separation on the top floor also? 'Cause if you reduce the floor thickness, you're reducing the ceiling of the building, the unit below. And what would you, how would you accomplish that? Would that be switching materials to a glue lamp, or, or a steel girder, or how would you accomplish that?
Yeah, typically, these, and I'm, I should know exactly which floor thickness we are using currently, but typically, these would be designed with like a 14-inch Truss joist product. Surely, they could be designed with like an 11 and 7/8 Truss joist that's spaced much more tightly. You could even go to something smaller and more traditional nominal lumber. You know, as soon as you get into that, then you have a bunch of dropped ceilings and things for ductwork, and, you know, things get, get messy. But there's, you know, there's definitely ways to shrink that floor thickness itself down by two, or three, or maybe four inches. And again, you know, if we reduce the plate height on the upper floor, and reduce the roof thickness and two floors worth of thickness, you know, we might be in the range of 18 inches, maybe 20, of, of reduction of where we are now, which again, based on the Building A, would have us in the 38-foot range, I would say, 30, 38, 39-foot range, but certainly, that's, you know, something to be ground upon in the minutia of the, of the construction.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I was gonna express my support for Commissioner Clifford's notion of the eight-foot flat, maybe with, it's getting close enough that maybe with some floor reduction, we're getting to the spot where it's livable. I know this, we're talking just a few feet, and it's, sounds persnickety, I guess, slavish, but, but when, these HPD properties, it's not the only one in town, and I'm just, I just hate to have the camel nose under the tent on this one, and 'cause the next one that comes around, now we're, you know, we're kind of, we're making some concessions here that for HPD properties, I'm just, you know, these, that ordinance and these projects were just so fought over, over the decades, that I, I'm really remiss to, to play with the height restrictions. I would prefer that you come, when you, when you're coming in with a project in these areas of the city, you come in at the height restrictions. I think it's just, you just do that. But the, but I do appreciate some of the other things that have occurred with this project, and I, you know, I do, I, there's a lot of things, obviously, a lot of thought has gone, has gone into it. So anyways, if we can get these height restrictions down to a level that Commissioner Clifford was talking about.
I, I guess I wanna be clear what, as to what Commissioner Clifford is, is talking about at this point, because I'm, I'm, I was more of a technical question.
At this point, I am perfectly happy with a flat roof alternative height with eight foots interior ceilings. Now, the applicant is talking about possibly reducing the floor thickness with different construction methods, which we would somehow have to codify, so that we, we knew that that was actually happening, not something that we have promised and, and doesn't happen. But that alternative works for me down here. It's the, the last one on page 18.
Yeah, I, I got that, but my understanding of what I thought the applicant was saying is that he was really looking for greater height in larger rooms. I think the eight feet was really something he was expressing could be, could be acceptable in the context of bedrooms, but not in the context of great rooms, I guess was the term that was used.
Through the Chair, I, I just wanted to throw something out there. Would it be acceptable to the commission to, so that last column, it's Table Three, page 18, I think it's the same one that Commissioner Clifford is referring to, that that be the maximum height? So that the applicant, or their architect, has room to adjust the spaces between floors, so that, you know, the bottom floor, the great room, they could fit a 10-foot ceiling potentially, and still meet the height requirement? To allow them some flexibility within the building?
So, so again, the notion is that as long as it's under 37 feet, one, one inch, to use Building A as an example, you know, frankly, you know, it could be a 10-foot ceiling if, if they could figure out how to make it work.
And the other floors could be eight with some reduced, you know, he, he explained some of the, the construction methods to...
As long as the overall building height is under 37 feet, or 37 feet, one inch, the, the ceiling height can be whatever it is. Is that, is that the suggestion?
That's, that's my suggestion.
Understood, okay.
And what does the applicant think of that?
I think we can live with that with just a little bit of clarity. I'm looking at the last column, and, you know, I would propose that the 37-1 and the 35-4 are clearly maximums, but not penalizing all of the other units by four feet or so, and allowing us to go up to the 35-foot height limit on the rest of the buildings in that column. Not, not to say we would go and make the buildings taller just because we can, but to say that we could keep the ceilings as they're designed, so long as they meet the height limit. And if they don't, then we'll adhere to this table.
Okay. I understand the request, okay. Commissioner Stejink.
I'm willing to go with whatever traffic plan the, the safety engineer considers most safe, although I don't buy that two lanes in both directions, as we have at Roberts, is somehow unsafe. I, I just wanna be clear that what we'd be doing is, you know, for, for the last 60 years, the HPD height limit has been 35 feet, and essentially, we will henceforth be changing the HPD height limit to 37 feet. I'm not okay with that. I'd like to see that 35-foot limit maintained. Thank you.
Chair, may I just add some context here? So the Hillside Preservation District, the HPD, does not specify a height limit. It's primarily concerned with coverage or disturbed area on a site. In fact, in the objectives, one of them, objectives of the HPD zone, one of them is the concentration of dwellings and/or structures by clustering and/or high-rise should be encouraged to help save larger areas of open space and preserve the natural terrain. When we're talking about the height limits affecting the project, they stem from the underlying zoning district that's most similar, so in this case, the R3. So the R3 height limit is 35 feet. The PD zoning, however, which is applicable to the site, allows you to deviate from that 35 feet when certain findings are made. So any talk of a height limit applicable is not derived from the HPD zoning district overlay, it's from the PD and R3 in this case.
I'm, I'm gonna follow up with that. I'm, I'm fully aware that the HPD does, the Preservation District does not delineate the height district, but I've sat in a movie theater or two in my life, and I, I firmly believe that height does affect views, increased height does limit views, not only from the hillside, but also from the ocean side. And I'm, I'm firm on that 35-foot height limit. Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, Chair. Following up on what Kristen just said, we, I'm starting to feel like it's, we're in sort of like a surreal zone. We've specifically been told that going beyond the 35-feet limit as being, as... beyond the 35-feet limit, as being, as it's being proposed, that marginal, the differential will have no effect on the view corridor, on the aesthetics. We, so, that's the only reason why, in this particular situation, I'm okay going over the 35 feet in this particular project, because the whole purpose of HPD is to protect the view corridor. I mean, that's one of the primary purposes. And in this case, I mean, I guess, I, I just don't understand why we're, why we're, well, that's fine. I understand why everybody wants to just have it as a straightforward rule, 35 feet, that's it. But I'm just explaining my own position of why, in this particular project, I think it's perfectly fine to be a little flexible. That's all. And I am, I hope that the project, the final project that we do approve, gives the builders some flexibility in terms of allowing a ceiling height that's over eight feet in larger livable spaces. It just seems comical to me that we would have, and I do think it's, it would be an inferior product if you had to have large living rooms and large kitchens and large open spaces that are restricted to eight feet. Just, that does seem like not contemporary, that's all.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think Commissioner Gordon makes a good point. I think, I see your point as well. I see that, you know, we're talking view shed corridors, and we're trying to, we're trying to keep the height levels down, just so that we, for the next project that comes in an HPD, and I know we don't have these height limits, that they're not going to 50 feet, you know, they're not going to 60 feet. We gotta have some, some rule of reason. The reason that this project is gonna command such a great market price here in Pacifica is because we haven't blown our hillsides out with inferior projects like other of our surrounding communities have. And so, you know, they're getting, they're getting the benefit of great views and hillsides because of the folks who've set aside HPD and have set aside open space here in town, and that's, they're gonna command a good price for that. But I do, I agree, you know, like, I think nine-foot ceilings is better. It's gonna, absolutely. So, yeah, I don't wanna, I'm moving off my position a little bit. I mean, I'm still kind of with Clifford, if we, let's give them the latitude to put a nine-foot ceiling in, if they want to, but not, I still like the 35-foot limit, just because, and not so much HPD, it's just that, we all live with it. We all wanna, I, there's so many developers that have come before us over the years that I've been on here that wanted to go above 35 feet, and we haven't let them. So, or unless it's a real special occasion. So, that's, maybe this is one of those special occasions, and it looks like it is, where we're gonna let them go a few feet above to, to kind of get that, that footage, that ceiling height in. And I can live with that.
Commissioner Clifford.
Okay. First, in terms of the, the view corridor, my understanding is, is that we're already at significant impact, and that's why you're saying that it doesn't make it any more significant to be a few feet higher. But we're already at significant impact. It's not as if we're discussing something that isn't already a significant impact, and that's part of why I have a problem with already having a significant impact, and then increasing that it's significant impact by going with the higher heights.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a matter of there is no impact. There is already significant impact on the view corridor. In terms of, I think I've been pretty clear about where I'm at with, with this here, and I could certainly live with a modification that our planning director suggested, and saying, okay, they can't go any higher than 37 feet 1 inch on Building A, and 35 and 4 inches on Building B. But I'm not comfortable with the applicant's suggestion that we all of a sudden move everything else up to 35. I'm willing to give him all, you know, whatever latitude he wants in terms of how he designs the interior of the buildings, but those are the heights I would prefer to see of the ones that are in column three. And we can take out the wording that says, "With eight-foot interior ceilings," he just has to figure out how to, how to get the maximum ceiling height out of the individual units in the building phase.
Well, I'll weigh in. You know, I am frankly okay with the, I guess, variation, I suppose, on sort of what you're suggesting. I, I hate the notion of not affording a little bit of flexibility if we were gonna go this route, sort of the flat roof alternative, well, sort of the notion that 37-1 and 35-4 represent the maximum height for A and B. I don't think any of these things are cost-free. I mean, they're, the part of the, part of this project is affordable, or some affordable units, and trying to figure out ways to ensure that these things aren't unduly, unduly expensive, recognizing they're gonna be expensive in the, you know, just in the nature of things. But if they're, if we could afford a little bit of flexibility with respect to some of these other buildings, to allow for a nine-foot ceiling without having to use, you know, sort of heroic efforts to sort of squeeze out inches here and there of ceiling height, I think frankly, that's, that's probably something worth including. I'm hoping we get, we're getting to a point where maybe somebody's in any event gonna be inclined to make a motion, because I think we've really had a chance to kick this around rather extensively, although I recognize I don't wanna shut off any additional urgent comments that folk have. Commissioner Steggenk.
My question for staff, can you give us an example of other buildings in the PD that have had that height limit waived in the last 10 years?
I can't think of any, but I, but it's not because, it's just because I'm not aware of any, doesn't mean that there hasn't been any.
Thank you. And my question is specifically also on the view corridor here. Is it the stipulation that there's no height limit that would affect the view corridor now that it's been compromised?
I believe what's been analyzed, and our Sequois consultant can perhaps clarify if necessary, but I believe the statement that's made in the EIR is that a reduction in height to 35 feet from the heights greater than 35 feet that are proposed would not be sufficient to eliminate the significant environmental impact. The document did not analyze if some height less than 35 feet would, would eventually eliminate the significant unavoidable impact, because the applicant did not propose heights that were that low. It was not part of the analysis. But certainly, 35 feet would not eliminate the significant unavoidable impact.
And what was the maximum height that the IR looked at there?
I believe it was the proposed heights, 45 feet 5 inches for Building A, and the somewhat lower heights for the other building types.
So, it's the ER's analysis that there would be no view corridor change between a 45-foot high, 45-foot tall building and a 35-foot tall building?
It would not eliminate the significant environmental impact. I'm not sure if there were, you know, shades of significant and unavoidable that were analyzed, but it was not enough to eliminate the unavoidable impact.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Oh, I was gonna ask you to kind of respond to Commissioner Clifford's remarks on the significant impact, but you just did. So, thanks.
Commissioner Clifford.
I wanted to point out that, based on the proposed heights, which is where I would think the builder, the applicant would go if he could, if he, if he was changing things, that would add two more buildings that were over 35 feet. There would be 35 feet 8 inches and 37 feet 3 inches. And then, of course, Building B would then go 39 8, and then, and Building A is at 40, 44 and 5. So, I'm, I'm reluctant to change the, the heights on the other buildings above 35 feet. I just, I wanna, I just wanna be clear on that. You know, if, if we're going to go ahead and go with the flat roof alternative and allow for 37-1 on Building A, I, I don't want any of the other buildings, Building C, D, or E, to go above 35 feet.
Understood.
I'm agreeing with that.
Okay.
I'm agreeing with that.
All right. So, so again, the notion was that in no event would any of the buildings, aside from A or B, you know, exceed 35 feet?
Yes.
Understood. Commissioner Gordon.
All right. It sounds like we got some consensus. I'm gonna make a motion. While we're on the building heights, I may as well start with that. Oh, I guess, can, do I need to, guide me through this, because I've got some specifics that I want to mention. Should I just start with the-
It sounds like these might be conditions of approval that we would be imposing or adjusting, and I'm not sure which, candidly, which conditions of approval we'd be talking to, but building heights in particular, and then traffic-
And color.
And color.
Building heights would be an added condition.
Okay.
Traffic would be addressed under condition 43, and if you wanted to add the paint colors, that would be condition 26.
Okay, great. So, I move to adopt the attached resolution, which includes a recommended draft ordinance for the city council's consideration in Exhibit A and conditions of approval in Exhibit B, to A, certify the Fassler Ave Residential Project Final Supplemental Environmental Impact Report, state clearinghouse number, oh boy, do I need to read, do I need to read all these different things here?
As stated in the staff report.
Okay, as stated in the staff report. Do I need to go through A and F?
Let's see here.
The lawyer's about to weigh in.
Again, we've got the various commission actions set forth in, on page 21 of the packet, each of those A through F. So, we just sort of like to-
Yeah, those actions are stated in full in the resolution. I defer to the city attorney, but typically, adopting the resolution by reference would be sufficient.
But the motion includes A through F, as stated, with a couple of adjustments, including a new condition of approval, which I'll let my colleagues say.
What he said. Great. So, moving to, let's deal with the housing, the height first, because we were just discussing that. So, the heights, and I'm referencing, incorporating by reference, table three of the staff report, that none of the, none of the heights would exceed 35 feet, with the exception of Building A, which would be no higher than 37 feet 1 inch, and Building B, which would be no higher than 35 feet 4 inches. Did I get that right, guys?
Mm-hmm. Yes, and again, to be clear, the other buildings could, at least conceivably-
Be no higher than 35.
Be no higher than 35 feet, being our understanding that the developer would use efforts to, to address the concerns of the, of the commission.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that particular condition?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so then, moving, and the, to the, you guys get that? Okay. So, that's the height limit. And then, in terms of, I'll go for the easy one, the color, in terms of condition 26, condition of approval 26, that the colors, all the colors be of muted earth tones?
Mm-hmm.
That would be an added sentence to that condition.
Yes.
Great. Did I, is everyone okay with that?
And I would like also for that to be in perpetuity.
Yeah. Is there a way to, to use language that would bind future, yeah, in perpet-
Would that be incorporated into whatever?
After units are sold and sold to subsequent owners, they would be subject to the same restriction?
We could reference CCNRs in the-
There.
Perfect, okay. Good, that's a good point. And then, okay, and then, three, our third thing, which is gonna be regarding condition of approval 43, this, we would, boy, boy, we're looking at Plan Two.
The striping alternative two, as was presented in a prior report, and-
February 5th, 2018.
The February 5th report.
Right. With no adjustments.
So, again, to restate the motion, it's the, the commission actions articulated on page 21 of the packet, A through F, certifying the EIR recommending city council enactment of an ordinance, approving the specific plan, the transfer of development rights, the subdivision, the removal of one heritage tree, adoption of findings of fact, this is a statement of writing considerations, et cetera, that relates to Sequa, adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, again, relating to Sequa, and incorporation of all the maps and testimony, et cetera, with the adjustment to condition 26 with respect to muted earth tones, and the incorporation of alternative B with respect to the traffic plan, and finally, the, the height limits as articulated earlier, and is reflected on the, at least in part, on page 18, the chart there with the 37-foot 1-inch height limit for Building A, 35-foot 4-inch height limit for Building B, and no greater than 35 feet with respect to the other buildings that make up the project. That's the motion.
Can I get a point of clarification?
Surely.
This wasn't my issue up here, but on the muted earth tones or the color issue. On, I recall, we did something similar at the Harmony at One project with regard to the color of the pavement. And we, we had a big thing up here, back in 2007 again, about that, got it approved as a condition, but then somehow, an over-the-counter approval was made to waive that. I was wondering how that happened, and do we have the same issue here?
Well, I can say with, with, with current staff, I don't believe you'll have the same, the same issue. And it wasn't an over-the-counter issue at Harmony. I think the plan check was overlooked in terms of requiring that that pavement be a different color.
Okay, yeah, it never, it never got, well, we raised, yeah, okay, it was a different regime. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. So, that's the motion. Is there, is there a second?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
I would second that motion.
Excellent. We have a motion of second, so why don't we go ahead and vote? Well, that project then has been unanimously approved. Thank you.
Easy peasy.
Simple. All right, well, then, it'll take us to communications, Commissioner Communications. I don't know if any members of the commission have communications. Commissioner Campbell, I see you're late.
Oh.
Was that, was that leftover? Thank you. Commissioner Clifford.
I did go to the library advisory committee meeting, and we are now starting to move forward with public outreach for the new plan based on what the city council has, has directed us. And there are, there are lots of good suggestions in terms of public contact, and we'll be moving forward there.
Excellent. And thanks for your representation of the planning commission on that task force. Commissioner Steggenk.
My, my question is for Commissioner Clifford. Is there a location chosen for the library, or were they still sussing that out?
The two proposed-
No, I'm gonna withdraw that. It's not agendized. I apologize. My, my question on the current status, the marijuana permits.
So, the, the police chief is due to transmit to the planning department the list of qualified applicants, and I believe that's due this Wednesday. And then, that will open the marijuana use permit application period, and that period would close on April 20. And we are currently looking at scheduling a date for the lottery, which we anticipate will be needed.
And do we sell 29 applicants?
Somewhere around there. I can't remember the total.
So, latest figures I can remember, 22 applicants for 29 locations. So, one applicant had multiple applications for multiple locations.
Do you have an idea how many ADUs have been applied for since we passed that legislation?
Since the effective date of the ordinance on November 8th of 2017, we've issued four building permits, and six applications are in plan check currently.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Staff communications.
Sure, I just had a couple things. I'm gonna ask Christian to hand this over. We have a letter from Mr. Salisbury, and it's just a letter to the city council mentioning his opinions about some land use associated with the pier. And so, the city council thought it would be, or a member of the city council thought it would be great if you guys could have a copy because of the, the subject matter. And then, my last thing is that our-
And then my last thing is that our assistant planner, Rob Smith, has submitted his resignation.
Oh.
So yes, it's unfortunate. He's going to be joining the city of Oakland as a planner three. And that's where he and his family live and they have a new child. So I know that although we will miss him greatly, it's gonna be a better move for him and his family.
Well, wish him good luck on that transition.
Wish him well.
Indeed, thank you. Well, I guess at this point, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Clifford.
I move we adjourn.
Commissioner Steggenk.
I move, I second.
All in favor? Unanimously approved, thank you.
Boy, we worked hard on that one.
Wow. Good job, guys, that was, that was some work.